All right, everybody, let's call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee. It is 6:31 PM. We're going to start with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First matter is citizens' comments. I don't think we have anybody here for that. So moving right along, we'll head over to the consent agenda and I'll look for a motion on that.
I move to approve the consent agenda of April 10th, 2020-24, containing draft meeting minutes of March 27th, 2024, and the warrants of April 12th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bob. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take the hand vote. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Moving on to the chairperson update, I think the only thing that I wanted to share was that we are without Mr. Shondor Simon. He is at present receiving an award as a Director of Technology from Bieber County Day School. It's called the Atlas Awards, and it's for excellence in technology and education. So he can't join today, but we congratulate him on that. And we'll give him a round of applause in person when it comes to you. That's fantastic. Another great leader for the town of Lancaster. So, moving on, we have our student representative report. We have both of our student reps here. Hi, Hansi Agueva. What can you tell us?
So this Thursday, all grades have a home road period to discuss behavior, class selections, pre-prom expectations, ideas for senior week, and overall events to wrap up the year. It should be fun and exciting for everyone. And as many of you know, Neshoba was recently approved with the Innovation Pathways, incorporating the Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering Pathway, as well as the Business/Biennial Pathway. I had the pleasure of tagging along with Ms. Ray, our business department head, to lead and the lead on this initiative, to introduce this opportunity to our current eighth graders across the district, as well as our current freshmen. We would also like to let the junior classes, as well as their parents, know that if they're considered low-income or have extenuating circumstances, our partnership with College Affordable will help connect them to services to reduce these financial burdens in the students. And if more families are interested, to please reach out to our Neshoba Guidance Council and Suspect.
There's going to be an art exhibition on Wednesday, April 24th, at 6:00 PM in the NRHS library that will be showcasing artwork from students in Art 1, 2, and 3, AP Art, Digital Photography, Printmaking, and Ceramics 1 and 2. We would like to congratulate 10 of our Neshoba seniors on achieving the Seal of Bilingual literacy. This is an amazing accomplishment, and we commend them for their efforts. Neshoba's Second Annual International Fest will be held on April 27th from 12 to 3:00 PM. This festival aims to celebrate the many cultures and language backgrounds in our community. There will be traditional games, musics, presentation, performances, arts and crafts, and who doesn't love some delicious food? Then the Neshoba Senior Showcase Concert will be on April 24th and will feature some amazing performances from our talented senior choir students.
That's all for tonight.
That's fantastic. Thanks, guys. Long haul, and of course, at the end of the year. Any questions or comments from the committee? All right, so thank you, guys, for once again informing us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Kirk.
Thank you, Matt, for your recognition. Our students, once again, stayed the day for me as I was going to talk about the Innovation Pathways time. But I think they did a great job of doing that. Yes, indeed, we're very excited to see Governor Haley personally announced the recipients of the Innovation Pathway grants, and Neshoba's received that. So in your school committee packet is the text of the announcement we made to the community last Friday regarding the Innovation Pathways. There'll be more information to come. There'll be a grant that comes before this committee, which we will recommend for your approval. And so as we get more details on those, we'll bring them forward as soon as we get them. But we're very excited to have that happen. So I'll come back to now my first point that's in my report. And that is the last day of school. We had an interesting week last week with some unexpected weather bringing a delay to Neshoba, and then doubled down with a power outage at the high school. And when 7:15 hit on a two-hour delay, we were at the line of no return. And so we did have to call no school for Neshoba Regional High School that day. So as a result, the last day of school, pending any other things that might happen this week, which we don't anticipate, will be Friday, June 14th. For all of our schools, with the exception of Neshoba Regional High School and the Transitions Program, their final day will be Monday, June 17th. And I'll be working with Dr. Boynton on how we close up the school year.
Monday, June 15?
June 17th. It's Friday, June 14th, and then Monday, June 17th.
Thank you. Oh, that's a bummer.
Yes. Yes, so as a superintendent, some of our courageous students often will email me the night before storm. So, you know, I think there was mixed reviews, please do, please don't, please do, please don't, you know, so...
The seniors were...
The seniors.
The seniors were the please-dos. So unfortunately, that does mean that our high school seniors, our high school students will return after that weekend. But I'll remind everybody that that's exam time, and so there's always some adaptive schedules to that as well. It's a brief report today, so that'll wrap up the report because we have a much lengthier presentation to come.
Indeed. Any questions on the superintendent report?
Yeah, I've got a question on the Innovations Pathways. Do you know when is the last day families can apply for that to be eligible for next year?
I am so happy that Dr. Boynton is in the room with us tonight. Dr. Boynton?
Ms. Cohen, this week, however, after April vacation, if a student is still interested in there are spots, we will happily take them on board.
Okay.
So feel free, reach out to me, reach out to Ms. Spect and/or Mr. Andriopoulos with any questions. But we would love to fill every single spot. And we will accommodate. We're just in the beginning of the schedule build, so we have plenty of time to do that.
I'm going to just repeat that in the event that one of the mics didn't pick up Dr. Boynton. So the Innovation Pathways will be open till the remainder of this week. But any families who do not submit their application by the end of this week, reach out to Dr. Boynton's office after April vacation. And because what we want is a good, robust program.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, rolling right along into new business. First matter here is about the Neshoba Regional High School Student Travel Program, and in particular, it's about France in April 2025. So I think we have some guests.
Yes, I'd like to invite out Mademoiselle Hermans, as well as our music teacher, Mr. Miller, to talk about an exciting partnership they're involved with, and an opportunity for our students to go to France, as well as some French students to visit us. So, Mademoiselle?
Bonjour, bonsoir. Hello, everyone. And thank you so much for having us. We're very excited. Eric and I have been planning this. Do you have the... Thank you. Okay, so the agenda...
And when you're ready for the slide, just say next.
Perfect. We're here tonight to... Next slide. To receive from you approval for this two-week exchange with High School Lycée André Moreau. It's in Rouen in France, Joan of Arc country, and us, Neshoba Regional High School. So what we're going to cover tonight is our rationale, and then who, the who, what, when, where, and how. So you'll see what's more important is the when, which is April 21st. This would be the French and music students going to France. And we can talk about the French students coming here also shortly. So this is what we'll cover, and we'll start with the next slide with a when. Okay, so the... What? This is still me right now. The when will be the... The French students are coming on October, if you can see the circle, 28th, in time for Halloween. There are 24 students. 23 will go into some detail. We're excited about their timing because we realize they have all our American holidays, like Halloween. They have our American football season. And you'll discover soon about their talents. We have the orchestra on...
The choir concert would also be on the 30th, so these music students coming in from France would be able to sing in our concert with us, as well as experiencing everything that...
And as well as all the other... Just Dr. Boynton just pointed out, Election Day will be a nice piece of Americana for the French high school students to experience. And overall, fall in both. It's going to be gorgeous. So we're super excited to host them. Those are... They've already started sending us their videos up there. They're very, very sweet. If you'd wanted to watch them, they're all on YouTube for you to watch. They're lovely. Very, very talented singers, dancers, and musicians. The next slide I can tell you about... Or we can watch a video. She's going to play the ukulele for us if you want to watch. She sings how much she wants to come here. So it's very sweet. Oh, and here.
We will watch them, for sure.
Particularly, they're very sweet. We might...
Pass this if you have any...
If you can back up one quick one. This would be our proposal for tonight for you, for us to go over to France. The hour April break is the 21st through the 25th, the orange. And we're proposing then, as well the following week, to include Paris and an extra couple days of school in the trip. So, and we'll carry on.
We can go to the next slide?
Go to the next slide. Here's Eric.
So we have provided a rationale for both, from the perspective of the Fine Performing Arts Department and from the World Language Department. Both lenses interact with every facet of the portrait of the Neshoba graduate. We would like to just offer some time at this point in the presentation to answer any questions that there may be about that provided rationale.
Amy? So the students from Neshoba are French students and/or music students, or...
I believe we can answer that. I think in... It might even be the next slide.
Might be the next slide. You ready for this?
If there's no other questions, we could move on to that right away?
Here you go. Okay, so the next slide answers your question. Thank you. There we go. Yes. There are 23 students that are brought over by Céline Le Comte. She's a head... That's her, again, if you'd like to watch her in action. Head music teacher. And 16 girls, seven boys, three... This is you, actually, just as we talked.
So the breakdown of the students joining us from France, we have the 23 committed, 16 girls, seven boys, and then the three adults from the school will be the music teacher, Céline, and then a science teacher and an English teacher. The... Who we are hoping to send from the Neshoba program would be an even split of students that are involved with the music and specifically choral part of the music department, 10 to 12 music and choral students, and then 10 to 12 students from the French program within the World Language Department. We're also hoping to give priority to students who hosted German exchange students. And there's a, I think, one more tier that would kind of go through that we'll discuss a little bit later. But that's a breakdown as far as priority to some music students and some French students, and also to the students that hosted German exchange. As far as our personnel, it would be my colleague, Robin Hermans, the French teacher, and her department head, Maria Davis, myself, Eric Miller, the choir director, and my department head, Joseph McCarthy. And we can go to the next slide.
Yep.
This is just a sample itinerary. I think we can go through this fast because I have a better example coming up, so we can go one more slide. This is where we would be talking about Paris. It's an hour and a half from Paris to Rouen. That gorgeous chateau is their high school. And more high school is in the back. And that's a very, very lovely video about their high school as well, if you wanted to watch. It's just a 60-second, but you really get a feel for their high school, where we would be going, spending some of our days. Okay? And the next slide. Might have skipped one. Okay, to discuss... This would be the sample itinerary.
Why don't you do the sample itinerary?
I'll help out here. So this would be how it would roughly pan out. We would arrive on... We would fly out on the Monday of our April break. Easter is the Sunday. That was the reason for the timing on a Monday. Get to the lycée on Tuesday from Paris, either by train or by bus, from Paris to Rouen. Then we are met by our host families. Okay? We would be hosting in turn on our side in October, November, and then we exchange. And then our students would stay with their host families, their brother, sister, whomever that they have met prior. And then they spend, for example, Wednesday, Thursday, shadowing at school, going to experience the high school life of a French student. We propose a day trip out on Friday, for example. We have two proposals. There's many to think of. We are very, very close to the battlefields of Normandy. So there's a wonderful tour you can do. We propose that one. As well as, we're not too far from Mont Saint Michel, which is the picture of the heritage site of Mont Saint Michel, also on the line of Normandy and Brittany. The weekend they spend with their families, which means the families can bring them to where they would love to take them, and should... Imagine yourself, if you were hosting, where would you like to show a young mind? And then back to school, and then another day trip. Then we propose leaving Thursday for departure Saturday, but can't go to France without seeing Paris. So we were proposing a night and two nights, Thursday, Friday, in Paris to see the beautiful city lights. And that would be just our group together, just the Neshoba group at that point. And if you take, go the next... Any questions so far? We're kind of going rather quick. Are you happy so far?
You said comment?
Go for it. Yes.
I think you're cruel only giving them a day and a half in Paris. That's just, that's an uncruel tease. Second.
So maybe two days and a half. Many of the... Some of the thought behind the staying with the families as long as possible is budget. Depending where we can manage to find a hostel, maybe we could make this a lovely extra day, night. We can walk everywhere, right? They're young. So that would be a rough agenda. And if you go one slide, you'll see Céline, our host...
She absolutely insisted that we include this slide. So Rouen is where we'll be. I believe that's where the school is, is in Rouen.
The 10 days.
And Elbeuf is a famous town, famous for the textile factories during the 18th century. And I, as a graduate of UMass Lowell, I got a kick out of that, the parallel to the American Industrial Revolution, and all the mill towns that are around here, in particular, Bois. So it could be an interesting way to see the connection across vast spaces, similar concepts even in different places. And then one of the last built, I think, Roman circuses, is that?
That's...
The reference. So there are only six left of these in France, so it could be quite the historical tour. Rouen, at a larger scale, is a medieval town and the capital of Anglo-Norman dynasties. So as an Anglophone country, an interesting kind of history point as well. And their really large claim to fame is that it is the place that Joan of Arc was tried and executed, burned alive in 1431. It's a fascinating cultural capital with a lot of history, as far as the history of France itself goes. So quite a lot to learn there. And we can go to the next slide.
So this would be for the Paris lovers. This would be how we foresaw the potential two days in Paris. We check into the hospital... Hospital, oh my goodness, hostel, and begin exploring. We propose a walking tour. I did do my junior year abroad in Paris, so I can walk it very, very easily. So, and I would love to lead that tour to also save some money. And then the... There's the Notre Dame should be open again, which is exciting. We can go through the Quartier latin, the famous Latin Quarter. The Luxembourg Gardens are there. I proposed an evening on the Champs-Elysees, walking up to the... Because you can walk, if you like to walk, all the way up there to the Arc of Triumph. Friday, I proposed going out with the commuter rail trail, commuter rail train, the RER, to Versailles and their famous gardens of Versailles. We can take the metro, our metro, and go to Montmartre after that. The famous on top of a mountain, this famous sacré cur, where the artists are. And then got to see the Eiffel Tower, and if we can get there at night, it's spectacular. And you get an almighty view of Paris, especially at night. Tickets need to be bought in advance, but we have time because this, if this all goes well, we have a whole year to plan, which is exciting. So and then day three, we would check out and head back to the airport on a Saturday to give the students time to recover and be back in school for Monday. So that was the thought behind that.
So to answer the questions of how we would have interested Neshoba students, sign up and start kind of meeting their French exchange students who are already kind of ready, starting this month. We estimate the cost of the trip to be between $2,900 and $3,100 US dollars. And again, with priority participation given to choral and French students, followed by students who hosted during the German exchange, we'd also open it then to BAM students and other world language students with priority there. We are hoping, with early approval, to have a jump on fundraising, given the cost of the trip, and just, and hopefully making it as little a burden on families as possible, while still being able to provide students with a really incredible educational experience and opportunity. Next slide.
Oh, this was only if time allows. This is my... I've done this trip twice before, and I wanted, if there were any questions, I could go into gory detail. But do you have any questions for us?
I have one question. I'll kick off. What happens if you have 40 kids who want to do it within the preferred groups? Do you have any thought?
How this kind of works out, initial interest is it will be 40 students. We would have, for example, a proper parent Zoom...
Informational meeting.
Informational meeting, where we get put a lot of information out there. Probably also a tour company will be involved, and we would really spell out the proper details, how much, and so on, and dates. And then the signups could begin. My experience in the past two trips I have done is that it starts very big. It is... You have to have a gentle adventure seeker in the student. They are staying with families. This isn't a tour where they're on the bus with us all the time, and we're going all together, and you're in a hotel with your friends. Do you see the difference? This is a real experience, and the children, the students, will be alone. So though 40 will be interested, it's that gentle courage that has to come out of that student who would like to really dive in, that full immersion. So we think 24 is pretty accurate, from what I've seen in the past. However, I've not been at Neshoba too long to understand what type of a Neshoba adventurer is out there. But that's a great question. Maybe we'll cross that bridge if we get there.
Do you have any experience with it? I mean, would it become a lottery?
Frankly, no. So I think we would have to see what the demand... Because I'm sure you're saying, you know, Washington's going, oh, I'm signing up. But you're not eligible.
There just might be some pent-up demand, I think, of where we are, so...
Well, I'll reassure the committee that if we're seeing a demand that's greater than what our educators are projecting, we'll get together with Dr. Boynton and do some brainstorming about what we can do there.
Any other questions or comments besides how amazing this is? I just want to go to Versailles. I don't know if I told you this before, but when I was in high school, I was supposed to go on this trip, and the Iraq war broke out, and everything got canceled. And so I have so much envy, and I hope so much that the kids can go and have a great time with you all.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for giving such an excellent, detailed presentation, and so much thought went into presenting this to us, and just, you know, making this opportunity available for the students is really, really exciting. And I know that you led a trip to Quebec recently, and my daughter was on the trip, and it went really, really well. There were some challenges, and it was handled beautifully. And so I, you know, I think, just so excited that there's another chance for travel for the students.
Can I ask a quick question? And this is not tongue-in-cheek, but it's a legitimate question. So you've done this trip before? You've done, has it done this itinerary before?
Yes.
You have? Okay. So you made it from Paris on the RER to Versailles, and then still had time in the same day to get back to the Montmartre and the sacré cur?
We did.
Well, I'm going to have to...
We could have spent longer in Versailles, I think. We spent, we saw the... So we took it out in the morning. We left at 8:00 in the morning. You get there at 9:00. You had tickets at 9:30 roughly. You go through the palace with a guided tour. And then we spent the next hour or so, and we actually rented bicycles. We kind of had a choice. You could walk or rent a bike, and I rode around for an hour. And then I would say we were back on the RER maybe by 1:00. And so then we went to Montmartre. We were there probably 2:30. It sounds strange, but then we could walk up, and then there was the artists and so on, and then we... It's doable. But you're right, though. Versailles is awfully nice, isn't it? You probably want to have a picnic in there.
May I ask a question, please? So it sounds like you already have 24 or so students that are good to go to come here.
Correct.
They are well in the planning process...
They are in the planning process.
...to come here in October.
Yes.
That's very exciting.
Yeah, they are very excited to come. And they've even, they keep asking, pestering Eric about music, like what's the theme they want to write some...
I think it's a significant anniversary for the D-Day landings. And so they're hoping to do a concert theme around resilience or kind of, you know, bravery in the face of challenge. And there's been some interesting dialogue already about the artistic value of a trip like this. And yeah, they are pumped. If anybody does... If anybody does want to go back to those videos in their own time, these students wrote songs that they sent to us introducing themselves. It's really a lot of cool creative energy. So they're excited to see more about our country and there's a lot of good there.
And the goal is that the students that we have that would be participating and going next April would be partnered with them when they come in the fall.
We would try to, correct?
Yeah, if possible.
Yeah.
I just want the committee to know that when students come to this, there are processes, vetting processes, like for instance, our nursing department works with them to ensure that students have proper vaccinations and things like that for our schools. So we follow all the DESI guidelines and regulations on that.
So as part of the exchange, does it mean that a student who's interested would need their family to volunteer to be a host family for the French students that are coming?
That came up interesting. A student asked me to that just today. He said to me that he really wanted to go and he'd be a great candidate. He dives right in, has no fear, speaks great French.
And is a music student.
And is a music student. So I was like, candidate number one. However, he said he cannot host. And I said, we'll work with, that is fair. That happens. When I originally, when I went over when I was 15 as well, my family couldn't host. So but I went over and a family hosted me anyway. So that could be worked around, you know, so that might happen. You know, we find simply, there probably is a lovely family involved and going, pick me, pick me. So they would take that student instead, the student. And for example, this way we'd build a relationship, a friendship over social. Nowadays, they do Snapchat each other, don't ask me. But that their own relationship could be worked out along the way. Do you know what I mean? Have I answered that?
Any other questions? Just so that you all know, this is something that we will vote on at the next meeting. So it'll be on the planning calendar. All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. For the inspiration. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, everybody. So moving on to the next matter of due business, we have a couple of presentations coming next that are connected to some degree. And Kirk warned me that even though his slide deck is gigantic, that we should not be frightened by it. So we are going to be mesmerized with data.
I was worried that the missing members might have had a cardiac arrest, which might be the reason. So it is a very data-rich presentation. So I am not going to sit on the slides and analyze the data in front of you today. It's meant to tell a story. So I'm going to tell the story through the data. And the second part of the presentation is the school choice hearing presentation that will be next week. It'll be two weeks.
A year ago.
Yeah, so the last slide has motions and things that you can ignore that until we get to next week. So in thinking of the title of this particular presentation, this is the best one I could come up with. This is, this is forecasting. It's not, it's arts and it's science. It's not exact and we have to be agile. I think what you're gonna see in the presentation is historically, our attendance at the school has been very stable in the school system. And we have not had dramatic year-over-year changes that have happened as an entire system. So the first part I want to talk about is sort of the process I go through when looking at enrollment. Do we do this as we're getting ready during budget season to understand what sections we would potentially need in the school system? So the first thing is we identify and track where students are enrolled in school. This is called the school attending report. We'll get into that in a moment. This is a required report that is submitted to DESI. If anyone Googled DESI school attending report, you can see school attending of any town in the state of Massachusetts. And it's by town because it's a report about the residents of the town, not solely the school system. We also analyze and track enrollment trends of the students who attend NRSD schools. Then we analyze and compare our trends against the NESDEC, that's New Women's Staff Development Council, to determine similarities and differences. So the slide, the back third of the slides are the NESDEC analysis that they provide for us annually. So talking about the school attending report, this is an annual report we have to supply to DESI. We use January 1st data and it has to be completed and sent to DESI before March 1st. And we reach out to the area schools to find out, do you have any kids that are going to your schools that live in our three towns? And as a superintendent, we have a norm, please just don't listserv all the superintendents to collect such things. Otherwise, you have over 300 people emailing each other to find out who's in your school system. But we do have a tracking mechanism. So for instance, for students that are in our towns that might attend Parker Charter, for instance, annually, they will send us a list of, these are the students who attend our school system. So we do all that compilation during the month of January and February. And it's some work, as you would imagine, because we got to sort of track down and look for where our students may be going. So when students do leave us, the principals do track and keep, hey, they might be going to a private school, another public school, or maybe they moved out of state. And so that's helpful to our technology office when they're gathering that data. Because once they leave our towns, we don't, we don't track where they went. It's only if they remain residents and attend schools outside of our towns. So in looking at the categories on school attending, the regional category is the students that attend the Neshova Regional School District. VOTEC are Chapter 74 schools, which are predominantly Minuteman. We do have a few students who attend our Volkany. Collaboratives are things like ABC, I give you my quarterly ABC reports. Charter schools, I just mentioned one example, like Parker. Added district students who attend public schools due to school choice or special education placement are in a category. Homeschool students. And then private school students who are there through choice or by a special education placement. So when we look at just this year, I'm giving you this pie chart so you can just see proportionally where we sit this year in the district. 85% of the citizens who are school-aged, and that is five to 18, in our three towns, attend the Neshova Regional School District. In the town of Bolton, that's 87.6%. And the town of Lancaster, that's 82.3%. And then the town of Stowe, that's 85.5%. So when you look at this table, it gives you a sense over time of what percentage of our residents, gathering all that data together, you can see the percentage of our residents who attend our schools. Collecting together is NRSD, Bolton, Lancaster and Stowe. You can see as you look over this, the last 10 years, that the greatest variance is about 5%. Nearly 6% I think in the town of Stowe. So I gave 10 years, but I think you should look at a couple of places. You can look five years back, 10 years back, eight years back, to just get a sense proportionally of the changes that we go through annually. So you can see that there were slightly, we declined in participation the last several years in a row. I would like to note that FY19 was the year that Minuteman opened their doors and that's where we began to see a significant increase there. But there's more information about that coming. So when we look at the rates that students are attending Neshova schools over time, it is a relatively flat curve. However, this is interesting. NRSD enrollment pre-K to 13 has gone down by over 400 students. So let's get, in order to understand that, here are the students that are attending Neshova, attending the schools outside of Neshova. The blue is our vocational technology group. And you can see how in the town of Bolton, that has increased significantly over the last three years. Charter school is the res pinkish hue, has remained relatively stable. And that rate number is low, 10, 11, 12 students. You will see that there was a spike in FY20, the next year, when we entered hybrid remote learning and homeschool students in Bolton. And notice that over time, the number of students attending private schools has gone down. So that tells us there's some different choices happening. In Lancaster, you can see the increase in vocational technology that happened about five years ago, but it's been pretty level the last four years. I think part of that is due to, excuse me, thank you. I think part of that is due to when Minuteman enrolls students in school, they do it proportionally to the size of your town, relative to all the member schools until they, and then if they have extra seats, that can offer them. But they do that to ensure that the member schools get at least a proportion of the town in there. You can see an increase in charter, but the rate is low, seven, nine and 12. In Lancaster, you can see there was a significant bump to homeschool students for hybrid remote learning. But that has returned back to pre-pandemic levels and a significant decrease over the last 10 years in families electing to go to private school. And here's Stowe. Stowe, you can see, has a significant increase in VOTEC. They are now our largest town that participates in the Minuteman Vocational Technical High School. And you can see there's been a decrease in charter. Interesting what has happened with homeschools. They saw the same increase in FY21 for homeschool. That has dropped back to a very small number again, that was a pre-pandemic number. And the in-state number has remained relatively flat over time, but you will note an increase in the last three years. So when we look at the, those are to give you a sense of the choices. And as I showed you that the enrollment in the school district has dropped. Look at the population of schooling's children over the last three years in our towns. Our population has dropped significantly over the last 10 years. The population of Bolton, while it has remained relatively steady over that period of time, the population in Lancaster has remained relatively steady over that period of time. Which you'll note, there's been a significant decrease in the town of Stowe. And I think that's due to a lot of, there's been a very low turnover in the town of Stowe in terms of real estate. People have stayed in their homes. And when their children have graduated high school, they've continued to live there rather than turn over to home. So we haven't seen a lot of, as much regeneration in the town of Stowe as we have the other towns. This is that same point expressed in a line graph to just illustrate that closing gap. Again, actual enrollment in each town to look at that. All right, so how do we use this to predict future needs? So I built a predictive model just based on the data. It has nothing to do with birth rates. It has nothing to do with real estate, home sales, anything. It's just simply, what do the numbers tell us historically over time? And then we also would compare that to the NESDEC analysis and projections. So this is the enrollment in our grade levels. Kids who walked inside the doors of our school over the last 20 years. This is the October 1st count data that you can find on the school profiles of the Department of Education. And when we look at a one-year change in enrollment analysis, this is where I've taken the table and said, okay, when you go from kindergarten to first grade, how much does that cohort change? And last year in FY24, it changed 12 students. Came into first grade that were not with us as kindergartners. One student in our district went into second grade that was not here as first grade. And that's the net. So some left and some came, that's just the net number. And so you can see in the one-year changes, you can have some dramatic changes in grade levels on a given year. So I'd like to build that into a five-year rolling average to sort of level it out a little bit, to get a sense of that. And you will get some, you can see here through the elementary years, our elementary schools as a school system tend to increase from one grade level to the next. But you can see they aren't numbers that are significant in terms of able to manage. The numbers that you see in kindergarten that tend to be large, those typically happen during the year. And so we're able to plan for that in terms of our sections for the next year. In the middle school, you can see in six to seven and seven to eight, it remains pretty level. The green and the red make it rather dramatic. It's just it toggles that way depending on what side of zero it's on. But eight to nine is the significant area to point at, is that you will see the impact of students who are leaving our school system in eighth grade to attend one of those other categories that I described to you earlier. We typically have a phenomena with some returns, ninth to 10th grade. But again, 10 to 11 and 11 to 12. I gave a similar presentation to this, to the school committee, oh, I think two years back. And at that time, learned a little bit that sometimes students will school choice out, sometimes for athletics or other activities at their 11th grade year. That is just a narrative that's been told to me, not a data collection point. So when we look at just this year and how, oh, I got a point over here. When we look at this year, you can see right now, we have had 198 kindergarten-age students knock on the door for enrollment next year. And when you take that number that is the bottom line of the five-year rolling average, round that off and add it to the current enrollment, that's where we get our grade level enrollments for next year. So let me talk a little bit about the projected enrollments that we get from NESDEC, the Northeast School Development Council. In this table, any of the cells that are in white are students who are, have enrolled in school. And this data is based on October week, one data as well. It may be slightly skewed, we'll report to them, not in the same way with our Sims report, so it might be one or two students off on a given cell. But the numbers are reflected in general terms accurately. The light blue color are reported births in our town that have not yet begun school. And the blue is estimated births that are going to be happening in those years based upon what birth rate trends have been prior to that. In your packets, I included the long reports of all three towns as well as the school district and it gives a description of the methodology that's in there. But this is just to give us a general sense of what is happening. What is not included in here as well, which is why I always look at the NESDEC with a grain of salt, is the projection for home, particularly with new zoning being happening in our towns. In all three of our towns, we have some pieces there, so we'll have to manage and watch that carefully. But this will give you a sense in the town of Bolton, what projected enrollment looks like over time. And you can see the projections for the town of Bolton will show an increase over the next 10 years. The partition rates are showing that in the, that rise will happen in the elementary levels. At the same time, a decrease would be happening at the high school and then a slight increase at our middle school over time. Town of Lancaster provides you the same data, so I'll just skip to the projected enrollment. You can see the town of Lancaster is increasing by approximately 100 students, so according to these projections. With an increase at the elementary levels and you can see relatively flat at the high school and middle school level. The enrollment for the town of Stowe, and this is where it gets interesting for us as well. They're projecting town of Stowe for the next 10 years is going to be a decrease of 150 students. And again, that's just based off of the methodology that is in those enrollment projections. We can't say how many births we're going to have in town. So that's how the town of Stowe over time would be projected. So when we express that for the Neshova Regional School District, we would project an increase based on the methodology provided to us of an increase of approximately 100 students in the entire school system over the next 10 years. Proportionally what that would look like. And I took the bottom of this particular chart and just made an individual slide. So just to give the committee a sense of, let's say hypothetically, you know, they made a good guess that those projections were reflected accurately. You can see how that will change the assessments in our town over the years. Particularly when you grab together the five-year rolling averages of the towns. We've already seen that in the budget data that we've shown to you. And then the one-year change in enrollment just at Neshova Regional High School. So this is. So this is something that we just want to continually manage and watch. Anyone in the public that's watching this out there, I would continue to hamper. This is based on a NESDEC evaluation using data that's available to them in the public and reported in the towns in terms of birth rates, number of home sales typically, but it does not incorporate the things that are in the works of government right now that can bring more residents to the towns. So this basically illustrates a picture of stability in the towns. The towns have historically kept about the same populations that they are now. And when I say historically, I mean within the last 10 to 20 years, with some spikes at times. All right, I'm going to pause right there before we get into the school choice discussion and take any questions.
Scott.
So I find these data all very interesting.
Yeah.
I also have a lot of skepticism around its accuracy.
You should.
Does the administration use this data for any decision-making?
No. No, we don't. I'll tell you what we do use, Mr. Powell. This is the most reliable one we have. Oh, I'm going to do it on the screen here, what do you say?
Do you want to plug in?
Thank you. This is, this is what we use that helps us the most. That's the most useful tool to us, and in using this tool, we were within six students last year of what ultimately we had on our top October 1st count.
Thank you.
I have a quick, couple of clarifying questions.
Yeah.
If you can go to the slide Lancaster in state private, like the Lancaster Ford charts.
Yep.
I think that the percentages might have fallen off of their in-state private. Yeah, go back to, go back two more.
Two more?
Yeah, but from Lancaster.
Stowe.
Somewhere right there, go back one, right there. So that green bar chart was not.
Oh, the, the number rates didn't get put on that bar, did they?
Actually, I'm most interested in that one.
Well, if you, just give me a moment.
Yeah, you can just use the y-axis.
I'll give you the axials here.
Oh, God, thank you, science people. And I can't see anything from here.
Turn around. Tell me which category?
In-state private for Lancaster.
So going back to FY15, it was 104, 114, 105, 103, 87, 78, 58, 60, 50, 69. So in the past 10 years, you know, it's been somewhere 40 to 60% changes.
Do you, can you break this out by, by level? Does it get broken up by?
Uh, no, the school attending report data isn't reported in that way.
You mean by grade? By like, high school versus like, how many third graders are using, losing versus how many high schoolers are using.
Well, we have that in this particular slide. So when we look at here, that, that's the slide that we look at to understand that question.
That one doesn't break it down by which. A town. Height they're going to, true?
Uh, I do have that broken down by town. I didn't put it in tonight's presentation, but I'm happy to get that for you.
And so I guess I'll share with you why I'm asking the question, and that is, there is a perception that people are going to in-state private at a higher rate as of late because they are dissatisfied. I've had a couple of people argue or claim that, and so I think that understanding the grade levels, the towns, and where those kids are migrating to. And then, and then I would, you know, argue, and I think probably somebody else will say this as well, is understanding why is, I think, even more important. And some people might say, like, who cares, they can go if they want, but we saw that the declining enrollment piece is what crushed our Chapter 70 funding. And so we don't want a declining enrollment.
So I can tell you what the most recent averages were for our towns. In the town of Bolton, K-1 was a 3.8 increase, 0.4 increase, 3.4 increase, 1 increase, negative 0.4 decrease, 0.2 increase, 0, and 1.6 increase.
That's like the K-8?
That's K-8. In the town of Lancaster, 4.6 increase, negative 0.2, five-person increase, 2.2-person increase, 2.6-person increase, decrease of 0.4, 5 to 6, decrease of 1. So the numbers are very small, the rate.
Yeah.
And then in the town of Stowe, it is level K-1, then a decrease of 0.4, increase of 1, decrease of 1.2, increase of 1, increase of 1, decrease of 0.2, and a decrease of a negative 1. That's a story that's just not playing out in the data.
So I guess the ninth grade is really the piece that we are likely curious about and trying to understand the why. Where are we with, with that? How can we better understand why they're leaving?
Yeah, we'll talk about it. And I know you and I have had some conversations about when our students go to Minuteman, we want to set up a collective data on that, around choices and where students, we have the information on where students are going, but I think it's a good time to develop a survey around, okay, your rationale's like, what is it that brought you to those changes?
Yeah.
And then you said that the numbers weren't all that reliable, and that this one was the big one for you. But it does impact a ton, right? I mean, knowing, having those projections helps us understand the number of kids that are going to be arriving at a particular school, and that's going to influence enrollment and FTEs. I mean, that has sort of this massive ripple effect, right? It's, it's not just a matter of looking at the numbers and then keeping that in some sort of silo and saying, well, this is what it is. That has budgetary impacts.
Correct. It does. What, where we're fortunate in terms of the stability with our enrollment is that the biggest mystery is kindergarten, as you're hearing a bunch of presentations every year. And so, you know, if we're, let's say, say we landed in a place with three sections. We even did it mid-budget season this year, didn't we? And I apologize if I'm turning to the other side of the table too much.
I'm going to have to move over here.
I need more gravity this direction. When we, we look at that, and let's say we have three sections and the grade level is 71, but from kindergarten to first, we would typically see a change of three, four, or five students. That's when we come in and say, we're going to hit another section, and prep another section. So that is the reason why we put one position back into the Lancaster budget in the event that that moment happens. Hasn't happened yet, but it's there because we're cheating at that point. But when we look at our data, it is, the move-ins, move-outs are so stable, remarkably stable over time, that that's really to our benefit in understanding how many sections that we can be putting, and puts us in a position where I wouldn't anticipate, you know, say for just basic classroom size, that we'd become like, we need 10 more teachers because we've had this change in enrollment. It wouldn't happen like that. It would be much more subtle.
I have one more thing.
Thanks.
The other thing that's interesting is that our enrollment has been steadily declining over the past handful of years. And yet if you look at the transition from eighth to ninth grade, which is really middle school to high school, starting all the way back in 2000, the 2013 five-year average, the drop from eighth to ninth grade is getting bigger and bigger and bigger, even though total enrollment is going lower and lower and lower. So, again, I really appreciate the fact that you said that you let the data tell the story. I, I'm thinking out loud, like, what, what is the story there?
I think a lot of it has to do with, you go back to where students are choosing to go to school, and we do have an increase of students that are choosing to go to Minuteman Regional Technical High School to receive the programming at that high school. We've had a significant increase, that's been going on now for four years. I will say, having looked at preliminary numbers now, looks like we're going to tick down a little bit in terms of the rate at which students are, are going to Minuteman this year.
Is that because we're at the ceiling?
Uh, no, no, the application, applicants weren't as, as many as well.
I would say just very quickly to continue down the path of asking, these numbers are important, but they're net numbers, right?
Yes.
Um, I mean, enrollment is not like spiking, so it's not that it's offsetting kids leaving by that much, but these are net numbers. So I think even though, like, we have five kids coming in net in any given year, you could have 10 leaving and 15 coming in.
Yes.
And so I would still want to know why those 10 are leaving. And I think that school districts that don't go after that story and try to get ahead of it will fall behind it. And it will. I mean, we don't have a charter school in our district, and so we don't have to fight that battle. We're not, we don't have, you know, we're not part of ANSA, so ANSA closes us off, that sort of thing. I just think that as, as schooling, as ever more options appear, it's our job to serve the children of this district to the very best of their ability. Nobody wants to leave their home district, I would argue. That's not anybody's first choice, I'm getting out of here. But kids leave for a reason. It's usually, I would say, you know, I'm guessing maybe 80% of the time it's for a bad, you know, something bad has happened. To try and understand what's happening so that if it's possible for us to remedy it the next go-around, I would really love to see something.
Well, I, I think that's a narrative that just doesn't play out. We don't see that happen in schools, that's not what's being reported to the schools when students do make changes. What happened when typically, when students move out of state. But the low turnover in residence as well, that has been a very low rate, so we just, we just haven't had that. There hasn't been a lot of turnover. So when you look at the real estate and if, if new families are coming in, others will go out if you're remaining in the level to the point that you were saying. But I think it warrants that whenever somebody makes another choice, it's worth it, ask why.
I was going to add to that, I don't know if we do something like this, but when families are deciding to make that move, do we have some sort of exit survey that we can, we can give to them so that we can just collect feedback, even if it's not, even if the story is, the anecdotal story is not being backed up by the data, it would still be worth understanding the reasons why a family might choose to exit the school system at a particular period in time.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, the five to six transition is a big one. You can see there's way more, yeah, yeah, six to seven is a big transition, and then of course, eight, nine, so like, what's happening that those parents are choosing to leave? Maybe their programmatic concerns, maybe, I don't know, it could be, could be any number of things, but it might be a reasonable thing to do.
I would caution us to climb the ladder of inference and try to imagine what it could be, because there's always a myriad of reasons why people make those life choices for their families. But just the question is a worthy one, of why are folks leaving?
That, that would prevent us from climbing the ladder.
I, I think you guys covered everything I wanted to say, but I just want to voice my support for asking the question.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, if we had had that kind of process in place and we asked that question, maybe we wouldn't have needed to add, ask it in 2021 because it's probably all related to COVID and schools being closed or whatever, but you can see there's like a red line. Wait, I'm, I'm looking at a different chart than you, hold on. I'm looking at a one-year change in enrollment analysis, okay. So I saw a red line across 2021, and my inference is that's related to COVID. But it sure would be nice to have, you know, the family's actual input into what was behind their decision. And it might help the school committee form new goals to address that.
Just to add, just a comment, and it's anecdotal, and so I'm sorry for my data, letting people, this is anecdotal, but what people say to, what I hear, what people are saying to me is that it's not based on a bad experience that they're leaving the district, they're, they're perfectly happy with what they're, with their experience here. And that they leave for the style. So like, there's a draw to Minuteman because of the way in which the education is offered, being more hands-on, being more exploratory. It's not the traditional high school model, and people like that. The same thing with moving to Francis Parker Charter School is that it's a different style, and so people are interested in that different approach to learning that is offered by that particular program.
Can I, I have, I have two questions and a comment, and the, the two questions, one of them is just inquisitive, and one of them is a leading question, so I'll start with the quick question. The, you had mentioned about checking data for home sales, and I'm just curious as to what source, what sources you looked at.
I don't do that.
Oh, okay.
The NESDEC report cites that.
Because I was going to steal that from you.
You'll see the methodology in the long form that's provided in the materials.
Simple, positive question. Leading question is, when you look at the, the net change in enrollment from year to year, you see that downtick at the eight, nine level, and then you see an uptick at nine, 10 level. I'm assuming that is a certain amount of dissatisfaction with students who have left the district and may be returning. Is that a fair statement, or do you see something else in that?
I, I wouldn't know the answer to that as, as much as I wouldn't know the answer to the prior question.
Okay.
There are some other factors in here as well, and the other factors are, when school of choice was closed off, impacts that in terms of not the residential data, but in terms of who, the walking in our doors data, that has an impact on those things as well.
And my comment is that, to quote the great Yogi Berra, it's déjà vu all over again, because even five years ago, before I was even a member of this committee, I sat in this room, and I heard two chairs ago, you know, make the same comments, that when we look at these enrollment figures, it's important for the district to understand why it is that people are leaving. And I think that it's fair to say that there would be overwhelming consensus on that issue on this committee and in this district, save for myself, who has said, you know, and I take exception to this, and I know that the chair has raised this in the past, and I know that it's something the district wants to do, but again, I think that there is a segment of residents of our district who, when their child reaches that point where they're going to withdraw from the district, any inquiry made by the district is a state action, smallest, not capitalist. And I always take the position that there is a certain segment of our residents who would look at this and say, that inquiry is inappropriate. What we decide in this household, where this child goes, is no concern to the regional school district. I am sure that there are a myriad of parents out there who will be cooperative, and they may be those who look at this as, you know, an airing of the grievances, but I also think there's a segment, like myself, and I would feel that way, that if I was inquired at the time when my child left the district, my initial position would be, I'm sorry, but that's not your concern. So I'm not sure what sort of information you get. I'm sure many people will be cooperative, but there is a segment out there, there are people who unfortunately think like me, said, that's, that's the bridge too far for me, that's none of your business. So I'll leave it at that.
So two questions. One has to do with the percentages that are attending Neshova, the rate of residents attending Neshova schools. What percentage would be, is there like a target threshold where if that percentage started getting low enough, you would be alarmed? Like, is that a, is 85% acceptable?
It's healthy.
Healthy?
85 is very healthy.
It's healthy.
Yeah. And when, I'll have to look back to when I did this a couple of years back, but there was a slide of the surrounding towns in our areas, and we had some other comparables, and we were like number two and three on that list.
I mean, I think that's an important kind of.
Yeah.
Piece of. I mean, I think that's an important kind of piece of context.
There really isn't a lot of turnover. And I hear the committee's desire to understand why people made all those choices. And I would say, to answer what question? Because what we do is we solicit feedback from our communities quite a bit. We're going to get a nice report next week when we bring forward the initial reports of phase two of the equity work that's going to be coming back next week. So we're constantly digging at the rationale of where are the places we can always be better, because we're a learning organization, and that's what good learning organizations do.
My second question had to do with out-of-district placements, because it wasn't one of the data points that you plotted on the bar charts, but I didn't know.
That's.
Is that because it's related to mostly special education needs?
Do you see out-of-district here?
We're not seeing it on the screen.
Yeah, it's, oh. So that's Stowe, that's Lancaster, that's Bolton, and that's the district. So reminding you that the out-of-district is a combination of students who attend other school systems through the school choice vehicle and students who are placed in schools outside the school system through the special education process.
Any other questions before we move on to the next half?
This is great. Thank you for sharing this.
And thank you for all the questions. And if you have any thoughts and feedbacks along the way, just let me know, and we'll keep going. It just, I want the committee to be reassured, these are things that we follow closely, because they're significant impacts.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
So in one of those very first slides, there was the bar chart of over time from 2015 to now, and the numbers have gone steadily down. So there's like, I don't know, it was 300 or?
That was the town of Stowe.
No, this is past. This is not projected forward. This is from 2015 to now. Stowe, but I think it's more than Stowe. And I think that there's school choice kids in there too, that, so a lot, Stowe has gone down.
These numbers don't include school choice at all. This, these numbers.
Those numbers don't include, they are only residents, they don't include the number of kids that attend it?
Think of this as census numbers. Census of the town.
Okay.
So school choice isn't incorporated there. Ms. Pock, in this particular graph, school choice students are included in those numbers, because these graphs are the ones where, these tables are where that's the number of students in the door.
So on some of them, the school choice was not included, and some of them, the school choice kids?
They serve two functions. The first function, essentially the school attending, which is the census number, gives us a sense, what are the populations in our towns, are they going up or down? The October 1st data is heads through the doors of the school. And so when you see changes in that, combined with changes in the population and talent, it tells a story and gives an understanding of why we have seen a decrease in enrollment in our school system over the last few years. So it's those two factors that gather this, that contribute to that decline.
So I guess what I'm trying to tease out is, so when my oldest daughter started at Neshoba, which was 2015, and the talk all over the district was overcrowding, overcrowding, there were so many students at Neshoba, it was so overfull, there wasn't enough classroom space.
That was the largest population at Neshoba Regional High School in the century.
Right.
That year.
And then, over time, it has steadily dropped. How much of that was because we had closed school choice? And so we were, the number of children that were, we had no more children coming in at the younger end, because we didn't have school choice, and we had those kids aging out at the upper end, so we were losing.
Does my question making sense?
FY15 was the height of the school system. Largest it's ever been.
Like residential, not even school choice?
Pardon me?
These are the people who live here.
Yeah, these are residents. Highest it's ever been in terms of our residents.
However many kids we had chosen at that point.
You can see from this chart here, that Ms. Pock is going to get me if my math is wrong, but it's 288 students.
And that's Stowe's number.
So it's, so just by pure enrollment, if everything stayed consistent, that decrease in population results in.
Here's what I found.
Oh, thank you. But in combination with the factors that you're talking about, what are those other variables that impact that? We would see that. Now, that would be in the school system. You wouldn't necessarily see that in the high school, because last year when we reopened school of choice, we had nine through 12 graders at the time, because they were walking through the system. We weren't adding to those cohorts for certain, but they had, they weren't walking up through the system at that time in the lower grades. All the complexities of enrollment.
You still have four years of, I think there are only three.
Well, we have more now.
Right.
Yeah.
Before we opened school choice last year, I think we only had three grades worth of school choice kids.
We were projecting three grades for this year. Last year there were four in the schools. Had we not opened it, there would have been three.
All right, let's get on to school choice then.
Okay.
And again, just as Kurt gets there, remember, guys, we're going to have a hearing, which is required on this next, in two weeks, and then we will vote on it in the meeting that follows that hearing.
So this is going to look familiar to you all from last year. I'm going to just go through the very similar methodology that we used last year, when we targeted where we would open up school choice to have the opportunity to welcome students into our school system that would like to attend our schools and also be able to bring in the revenue benefits with that without having to provide additional staffing to the school district. So some important things to note. School choice is automatically open if the school district does not vote to close it. The school committee can vote to limit the number of students in a particular area as well as grades and the locations where they'll be assigned. If there's more applicants than available seats, a lottery would be conducted. Employees may enroll their children through school choice, and they are subject to the same rules and regulations of all applicants. There's no preferences for employees. That's statutory. Once accepted, we're obligated to provide a student with a free and appropriate education until they graduate from high school or move to other places where they enroll. It does not apply to current students wishing to change schools within the district. That is just something that we would make a decision on locally if we wanted to do that. And siblings of enrolled school choice students will be given preference. So this is just some basic numbers that Ms. Mall Karen put together for us. And you can see the FY preliminary numbers, the district bottom right-hand corner, I'll take you to the impact of last year's vote. You can see our net of those going out, those coming in, did reduce, which is what we were hoping for when we were looking at that in the budget. I think over time, when we get into our school choice policies or measuring this, we want to get to level water. And once we're there, we'll add that to the criteria for managing the population. To give you some feedback, we had 43 slots opened up last year, and we utilized 20 of those slots. All those students that applied by the deadline and were accepted. And if you recall, I even came back to the committee and said, we have some space in our freshman class to increase that number from one to four, and we validated that in our junior year. So 20 students have entered the school system this year from other towns. So in managing those enrollment recommendations, I'm going to continue to recommend that we do not open school choice in grades kindergarten through grade two. That's where you soften the enrollment data earlier, where we have the most fluctuation year over year. So we want to monitor and be careful there. Utilize class size limits, no more than 22 students per class. In high school, no more than 220 students in a grade level. Do not open school choice if total district enrollment exceeds 260 students for any grade level. That's because based upon our numbers, when they leave eight to nine, we want to be able to manage that 220 number. I would recommend it be that same number again. For grades K to eight, do not open school choice if the enrollment is within four students of the class size floor. No more than four students per grade level per school should be considered, and prioritize lower class sizes across locations to balance classroom sizes. So this is the table of our sections. So when we look at current enrollment, where we sit in literal enrollment today, we would close grade six across the district, because together as an aggregate, there are 269, which exceeds that 260 recommendation, along with grades kindergarten one and two. You can see that would leave enough room for four students to be enrolled in each grade at Neshoba Regional High School. At Florence Sawyer School, we could allow up to four students in third grade, two students, two students in grades five and six, four students in grades seven and eight. Mary Rollington Elementary, I recommend that we close all grade levels. Luther Burbank Middle School, we would only open grade eight for four students. At the Center School, I recommend we close all grade levels. At Hale Middle School, we would open grades seven and eight for four students. So when you gather those all together, you can see that's the recommendation that's summarized there. And the last couple of star, last slide are the motion considerations that I just put up there for your benefit for next week. So with that, I'll take any of your questions.
And do you have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Chuck.
And Kurt, this is hypothetical, and I want to preface this by saying I'm not taking any position on this whatsoever, but just hypothetically, so when you, when we open up the district to school choice, we set a number. And let's say we don't reach that number. So it would be fair to say, would it not, that if a student wanted to enroll in our school district, if we're not reaching our number, they can automatically opt into our district?
I think it would be wise to just, to set a date. To set a date and a deadline of you need to turn your application in by X time, lots of variables can happen, particularly after the school year starts, that are very just unpredictable variables. So I would recommend that we have a set date.
But my hypothetical is based on the fact that there would be, you would either have your maximum number or less. You wouldn't be getting into a lottery system.
Correct.
Okay. Hypothetically, let me, again, I don't want this question to be misconstrued, because I'm not taking any position on this, I'm just wondering out loud. Let's say you have a student, hypothetically, who has significant special needs, and the recommendation from his current or her current school district is for an out-of-district placement. And they opt, once that determination has been made, to change school districts to ours. We would automatically be required to, or I would assume, to take on some responsibility for that out-of-district placement. I don't know if there's a process by which we would reassess what the former district did, and maybe make our own determination on that, or are we married to that determination with that child comes to that ID?
In terms of the educational programming, both districts are at the table, and it's the sending district that is responsible for the cost of that student, not the receiving district.
So that cost stays with the sending district?
Yes.
Is that statutory?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes. You can see, let me see, you might be able to tease that out a little bit in the costs here. I am going to hear about it tomorrow, aren't I? Okay. So this is total school choice tuition out. You can see from FY '23 to FY '24, we in Neshoba went down 2.9 students in terms of students going out, but our cost went up, because any students that we send out were billed back for any delivery of those services. Does that answer your question?
I just want to, so just to break it down to me like I'm a third grader. If you're saying that the cost for out-of-placement, out-of-district placement remains with the student's original school district and not with the new school district?
Correct. Correct.
If the child were to move in, then it would be completely ours.
Yep.
If the child became a resident.
But that if the student became a resident, they're not a school choice student?
Yeah. No. As a school choice student, the cost is with the sending district. Because they are, the sending district will get the chapter, the circuit breaker reimbursement aid for that student.
Yeah, can you explain how your recommendations apply to Florence Sawyer? Because I think one of the criteria was, had to do with 460 students per school. Is that right? I'm trying to recall the.
Oh, excuse me, there is one error that I need to correct. And that is, and I'll correct this for the hearing, grade six needs to be a zero, because grade six had 268 students in it, so the whole grade six in the district is closed.
Let me go back up to your criteria. Oh, 260 students per grade level. That's what I, so it's not per school, it's per grade level. That makes more sense. Okay.
But I thank you for finding that, because that is an error. So it's grade six at Florence Sawyer School should be zero. Actually, I'm catching Miss Call.
Actually, I don't think that's what I was trying to.
Say you're welcome, that was great.
Okay. I have a quick question. Can you remind me, does yellow mean that we are kind of teetering towards the edge?
No.
Why is it yellow?
It's yellow because it draws my eye to where we're adding, as opposed to the red where we're closed. And since, and I'm totally a stoplight guy. Ken Robinson once said, there are two types of people in this world, the people who divide people into two groups and the people who don't. I'm kind of one of those people.
Okay, easy. Oh, I thought I saw a hand. No.
Well, just, I also just want to make sure, I think there might just be one other little error on the recommendation for opening and closing.
Is it on the narrative piece?
It has the close school choice with each kind of breaking down.
Yeah, yeah.
I think eighth grade is supposed to be 12, not 11.
What slide is it?
Oh, what slide am I on? Fifty-six.
Can you say that again?
I think eighth grade, it looks like it's supposed to be 12, but at the bottom it's listed as 11.
Oh, well, it's listed at 11 for a good reason. You see the number above it is 249.
Okay, so even though, but then why does it say open eighth, four at each eighth grade level?
Yeah, so four at each eighth grade level, because depending on what location they request, we could go four in Lancaster, four in Bolton, three in Stowe. We'd go four in Stowe, three in Bolton, four in Lancaster.
So only accept 11, but there's potentially a max of four at any one school?
Yeah, so each one of the schools could take four students.
Got it.
But 12 would take us one student.
As a grade, as a whole, it's 11. All right, thank you.
Can you tell us what happened with, or was going on with grade six? And should, I have two questions. The first one is, grade six seems to be problematic when the kids get up to the high school, but you are expecting that we will continue to lose about 40 kids, maybe 50 kids?
Grade six looks like the way the graduating classes looked like in the 10 years previous. So they're a bubble.
Yeah, and that's not going to be problematic, because the classes on either side of them will be lower.
No, but I think we can forecast and see now, when, as that grade level goes through, we wouldn't recommend to add students to that class. And when they get to the high school, that floor would be 220, the ceiling would be 220 students. be 220 students.
And so if they are at 230, would that mean that you would like peel off from the other grades how many seats we offer?
I think that's something we could discuss at that time. Luckily, we're three years out.
Great. My second question is about my hopes and dreams for all high school students returning to Neshoba when the new, brand-new high school's there. They want to enjoy the amazing facility. Right now, you are forecasting that we will continue to lose about 40 kids, right? Because if we don't, or not 40, I'm just worried about, yeah.
Yeah, it's about 40.
So like we, like we kind of have to lose that many. And when the new high school comes online, what if we don't lose that many? And the reason why I'm, I mean, you said earlier, I think, that even if we had 290 kids per class, the brand-new high school could fit them.
Let's say 100% of these students in grades K through eight were to enter the high school and you grab any four-year group, we have capacity in our high school, we just wouldn't have more students.
Karen?
I just want to make sure I understand. So we're having the hearing in two weeks and the vote is two weeks after that?
No.
No, it's all in the same day, right? Okay, sorry, I must have...
Any other questions on this recommendation? If something comes to you, please feel free to funnel those questions through me to Kirk if you see any other teeny little things. Awesome, thanks, Karen. This is phenomenal and we appreciate it. That's a lot of work and we know that. You've been working on that distributively for a long time.
Well, the good news is now we have it at a research and you gotta bet it's going to go up on the transparency webpage.
Love it. Okay, guys, we're going to move on to unfinished business. We have a couple of votes that we're going to potentially be taking as we look at the second reading of some policy changes. Please know that if we are not ready to take the vote tonight, we do not need to. We can go to a third reading at the next meeting if we all choose to do that. So before I take a motion, let's look at the school lunch policies. Is there anybody who has concerns?
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
I think that the school lunch policy read that if there's any money on the student's account at the time that they either graduate or move out of the district or whatever, that that needs to be requested. The parent needs to request that money back.
Okay.
So I'm wondering, like theoretically, how many students do we have graduating this year? Let's give it a round number, say 300? So a fair round number?
Say that again.
How many students are in this year's graduating class?
Their year's class is, was it 220?
220, so say 200. So theoretically, you had 200 students graduating and they each had a little bit of money left on their lunch account. That's a pretty good chunk of change. So what happens to that money?
It's returning them if they...
So they don't need to request that it gets returned? It just does get returned?
No, I believe it's a requested return.
So what if they don't request it?
Yeah, it does say.
That's a good question.
Written request for refund of any money.
Donation?
It just remains in that revolving account.
How much is there?
And that is...
I believe it would remain in that.
How much is there now?
Oh.
That's not allocated to students?
Pardon me?
That's not already out, that's not allocated to students based on prior year's leftover money?
Well, yeah, and I don't know the numbers in that account right now. I'd be, you know, Mr. Moll, Karen here. The only money that we draw in where students are charged are when they make choices beyond what is already provided for them. So, and they would have to have that money to purchase the seconds anyway, so I don't think that's a problem.
So the district does not have an obligation to return that money to families?
That's a good question. I don't know what statute or...
I bet you dollars to donuts that if you look at this, those funds would as cheat, as they say, to the state and then would go into Secretary Goldberg's unclaimed funds account and you go online and you can...
Search your name out here on the radio all the time.
Those funds belong to the student or the parent or the family. Those funds, by, I believe by statute, would have to, when you stay back, they cheat to the state and it goes into the unclaimed funds. Go online and ask Secretary Goldberg for a check for $10.28.
I also know that probably one of the complications is they don't always have a place to send the money automatically. And so like if I have a checking account on there that I was using to give the money to the program and then I close that checking account, but I leave it on file and they try to send the money back, it's probably a lot of administrative hassle when it bounces, et cetera. So probably the written request is like to eliminate that kind of inefficiency? But are you, are you saying that you would rather it wasn't that way?
I'm, I'm just, I'm, you know, at a lot of, like at any college, your meal program is use it or lose it. If you don't use it, the school owns it at the end of the semester. I'm just curious about that policy. When my older children graduated, we got a note from the district that says, "You have," when Nathan graduated, "You have this much money in your lunch account. What would you like to do with it?" And then we chose to, so we had three choices. We could choose to donate it, we could choose to put it in another child's account, which we did, because we still had a student at the school, or you could choose to get it back. So I'm just curious about it.
We'll get that...
Either use it or lose it scenario, or if the district can't use the money, then...
I bet we can't, I bet the district can't just keep them, right?
Yeah.
Like a college.
On a related note, House Ways and Means put out their budget today and universal free lunch is fully funded. The House Ways and Means budget.
Is some, this came up in the manual, is breakfast available at all of the schools?
Yes.
So the kids can get breakfast and lunch in any of the buildings, any...
Not physical.
It says breakfast, lunch, and every snack.
It didn't.
Is it Hale in the...
Currently in the manual says Hale, Hale only. We're like, oh, it's a manual thing. Yeah. We'll fix it.
Okay, so you perhaps want us to do a little bit more digging before we take a vote on this one? On this particular one?
I'm curious to the reasoning why it, why it is presented that way. This came from a...
A M A C.
A M A C that way. Curious as to why it's done that way? Because it seems to me that...
Like if there's a good reason, leave it.
Yeah.
If there isn't, maybe we can move toward the protocol you were talking about. Okay, we'll get that.
Well, that would be a change in, in protocol, I guess, because that's, right, not doing that is different than what was done in the not-so-basic past.
Okay. Any other comments about school lunch policy? Okay, so that's E F D. But does it, do you guys want to move forward with the others? So for example, E F C is a universal free school, revised policy, et cetera. Any other comments or questions before we take a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the motion that I'm seeing includes all the policies, but, so are you asking whether we want to take a motion to approve all of the policies or are we going to try to remove each one?
No, all of them.
Right.
So the motion would read, accept all of the policies that you have listed there minus E F, and like just don't say E F D. But for the rest of you guys in the...
Should we go for the revisions? It sounds like some were revised and some are new.
Were there, for the food policy ones, were there any revisions?
Um, no, those are new. They, I mean, well, they're revised in terms of like, just to say that it's universal free, you know, that's what was changed. And the, and the stuff about, the language about having to pay, like that, how that was handled, that's basically what was changed.
Okay, but since the last meeting?
No, nothing was changed there.
Okay. So this E F D is the only one that we don't, that we don't want to vote on?
There's only two that I modified, or actually one.
Yeah.
And I asked two questions to you. One was how we had taken out that language about the superintendent or the director of technology.
Yeah.
So...
Because we have a technology manager.
Yeah, so we took that out.
Although that's the technology policy, so hold on that for a second.
Oh, okay.
Because we're going to do that next.
Oh.
On the food policy?
No, we didn't make any changes.
So E F D, if we, so if you could read the motion and just eliminate E F D and if we can move forward with all the rest. Okay. The motion will be on the table and then you guys can discuss if you want to again.
Okay, I move to adopt the revisions to policies B H E, E F C, I J N D, I J N D B, I J N D C as presented and further move...
Period.
Period.
As presented.
As presented.
Okay, so hang there. Amy, what are you thinking?
Well, those are the technology. The only ones that are school lunch are E F C and E F D.
Oh, my gosh, why?
10 of them are technology policies.
All right, will you rescind your motion?
I will rescind my motion.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Okay, so now we're just going to do E F C.
Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify before. So you, this motion will read just to approve, to prove E F C, but not yet, okay. I move to adopt the revisions to policy E F C as presented.
I second that. Any discussion on E F C? Okay, everybody? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Now we can move on to the technology policies, which are far more voluminous.
Okay.
So Amy, you said that since the last meeting, there were two things or three things you had to address.
So we took out the phrase all the time where it said like, the superintendent, in addition to the director of technology, would create these policies. And you're fine with that, just saying superintendent, right?
Yeah.
Is that in one particular policy?
No, that was in several of them. Anytime we saw it, it was highlighted in every policy that we shared last time. The other thing that Joe brought up last time was in G B E E. And that was about how some people on the policy committee wanted to add in something about personal communicate, like Bubba said, like occasional personal communication is permitted so long as use does not interfere with the point. Remember, Joe, and we talked about being a contradiction? So I took that out. But I know there were some people on the policy committee that were a little bit, that felt like there should be some clarification around that about email use particularly by staff, like for personal reasons, since, you know, you can request things as, as public documents, you know what I mean? Like it's all open records or whatever. So I don't know what you wanted to do about that. That was my other question, because some people in the committee disagree with Joe. Or you didn't tell that it was a contradiction, but felt like there should be something in there.
Alita, can you reject G B E E?
Which one?
G B, actually, you know what? Kirk is actually asking that we perhaps push this one off to the side and hold it for the next meeting so that he can get some more clarification?
Madam Chair, may I, may I, I know you want to move this along and I just want to throw this out because it looks like we're going to table any discussion on G B E, and I appreciate that, but that is where I raise the concerns. Just, just an observation. As I read, and I, can I, may I indulge you? Will you indulge me for just five seconds on this?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, I know you want to move on to this. First of all, I appreciate any consideration to any of the comments that I made at the last committee meeting. And as I read this, I still, it says just very quickly, "The digital resources are provided to support the work of the district. Occasional personal communication is permitted so long as use does not interfere, et cetera, et cetera." Two paragraphs down, it says, "Staff is required to use their school-issued accounts, not personal, for all communication with students and parents, guardians, and accounts must be used for this..." Okay, so I guess I'm still a little, again, nobody has to give me an answer. I'm still a little fuzzy on, we have occasional personal communications permitted and then the directive, two paragraphs down says, "Staff is required to use the school-issued accounts for, not personal accounts, for all communication with students, parents, guardians, et cetera." Is there a distinction there? And I ask that rhetorically because it looks like we're not going to...
So I assume, only thing I read that is, is like you would use your school email account to deal with personal business.
That you should not...
Right, that, that would be the like, they don't want you, like that would be the exception to that, because it says, "Staff is required to use it for all communication with students and parents or guardians and when conducting school business." But you could still use it for personal, and they, I think that's what they, they don't want to happen. I don't know.
I think I read it as there's a digital resource, which is the laptop, and there's a digital email address, which is school-issued. I mean, they're both school-issued, but the digital resource could be used for personal communication. That's how I read it. The resource could be occasional, occasional personal communication is permitted, like on the laptop, but the district, district email address is only for not personal use. That's how I read it when I read through it.
So I think that what I'm reading as is, and I'm thinking of myself as a teacher here, is that I shouldn't be emailing parents with my personal email.
Right.
Because they can't track it.
Right, it's not...
That's actually the bigger problem. And so my reading of it is, if I'm on my laptop doing schoolwork with my, my school-issued stuff and then, oh my God, that doctor's appointment, I open up a new tab and I go to look at what my doctor's appointment is or their address, I'm about to leave, like, I need my doctor's address, that's permissible. And I can, I am able to do that and no teacher or staff member is going to get in trouble for looking up their doctor's address. But I cannot use my school email to communicate with my doctor.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Right.
Okay, may I, okay. And going back on what Mr. Simon said the last time, he said, "You use an example of using your personal laptop to print something or what have you."
Yeah.
And my argument was, that's a fair and reasonable interpretation, but it doesn't say that. Doesn't say accepting use for printing out from your personal computer. I guess my question, again, I ask rhetorically, every staff, every student and every staff member receives a laptop. But we have faculty, put this in sight, we have faculty who sometimes use their own personal laptops. Okay. And the districts...
For, for school district business?
Right.
They use their issued laptop.
So going back to the chair's example, when would the occasion come that somebody would need to find their doctor's address? You're using, you're using your, your personal computer, using...
Not using my laptop, my school-issued laptop.
For personal, for personal...
Quick personal Google search.
Yeah.
While I, you know, I was emailing parents, grading papers, oh my God! And they, right, so like it doesn't make me have to take out my other laptop and look something, so...
Or even just going into Google, logging out of your school account, logging into your personal and send communication.
As cumbersome and as burdensome as that is, I would suggest that's probably the preferred methodology. I only, I have, I'm, I am imbued with this doc, this, this laptop. I never use this for anything but this, you know, work that I do here. It comes out twice a month, every time I pull out the other one. So I'm just wondering, this is the policy, we're allowing some personal use for...
Karen? I guess I'm thinking about the flip part of it. As someone who is a teacher for many, many years, I always had my school email on my cellphone and I would communicate with parents, not with my personal email, but with my school email that's on my personal device. That's one thing. Second thing is, and this is something I did not do, but a lot of teachers do it, is texting with parents. I always thought it was crazy, a lot of teachers do it because it's convenient, but that to me always felt kind of dicey. But I, as a matter of trying to do your job, which does not fit into 7:30 to 2:30 day and being out and about and needing to respond to a parent or another teacher, you're going to do it on your personal cellphone. You're not going to do it on this. There's no way.
So we, we were just instructed, we're not to do that anymore?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, like, it doesn't really match up.
Well, it says that we have to use our school-issued accounts instead of our personal accounts.
Accounts, but device.
Accounts, not device. She's saying device.
Yeah. Cause Joe was talking about the device, but this is my device, and I promise you.
You can't text.
Teachers, not, I'm, take texting out of it, just put email in.
Right, you can log into your email.
Yeah, so if I completely, it should be from your school account. I hope teachers are doing that. But in terms of the device, this is, and I think because Joe just mentioned the device, right? And, and you're, I'm same as you, Joe, I pull this out twice a month. That's the only time I use this. And it's almost never charged. But, I don't know, just that, that practical piece of.
And so do you, you like the way that the wording is? Because it technically at this point in time doesn't allow them to use their cellphones as long as they're in there.
I think that that makes a lot of sense. I just, I just might, I guess that's one clarification is that it's the, no, we're not talking devices, we're only talking accounts.
Okay.
Right? But also, um. I don't, and so that this, I guess because this doesn't say texting, it says on your account, that would eliminate texting.
Yeah.
Right? Because it's not listed as allowed. Unless it was a school issued cellphone, the teachers.
So GBEE, however, is going to go on hold. For further communication with our, um, with Chi and others on your team. Okay? Any other, so Amy, you said that that was the one piece, like you said, the taking out the director of technology, you handled that, and then this piece, which is still.
I actually took it out, what we originally had in. But I emailed, I asked Kirk about it when I sent it in. I was like, well, I wasn't sure what to do.
So take GBEE off?
Yeah.
Anything else?
It clearly needs more than.
Okay. Anything else, Amy, that we should?
No, other than that.
Draw our eye to. So nothing's changed since the last meeting, all of the other technology policies?
Yeah, those same.
Any further questions before we put a motion on the table? Are you ready? You have a question?
No, I feel good. Yeah. So I move to adopt the revisions to policies BHE, IJND, IJNDV, IJNDC. EHAA, EHB, JICJ, KDC, and KDCB as presented.
I will second that. Thank you, Amy. Okay, Amy. Any further discussion? Policy subcommittee certainly had their work cut up from them, for, for them, and I appreciate all of your hard work, just want to go on the record with that. And the job's never done.
We will let it.
So these two things, the other things will come back to that. Any further questions on those?
Well, I'm just, the only question I had was about the use of electronic messaging as school committee members. This does talk about.
Can you give us the letter?
BHE. Because it's something about electronic, the title of the policy is electronic messaging. But it also talked about sharing documents.
We added that in to the original one, if I remember, because we said we felt, because we've been working on the manual, and we've talked a lot about it, and that was in our training, um, when we did the training for school committee, and they kept emphasizing that over and over again, that people are, are unclear, it seems like people are unclear that using the same document and doing work on it together is actually violating open, open meeting law. So we put it in that document because it's been an issue, like, that keeps coming up in various trainings and stuff.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody, well, I guess that was really my biggest, I, I've had questions about the shared documents myself, and I know that some of us who have been on committee for a while experienced an issue with sharing a document and kind of learning the hard way that that's not.
Allowed.
Allowed. Nobody else, I guess if nobody else has any concerns about this.
I'm totally fine, it says we, it says we can't do it. And we can't do it. So is that okay?
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask a question about that? Okay. So you're talking about the third paragraph and, through the chair, to Ms. Cohen, you talk about the third paragraph, that's the, the issue?
First paragraph.
It's the first paragraph, it says, um, as elected public officials, school committee members shall exercise caution when communicating between and among them, so electronic messaging services, including but not limited to electronic mail, text messages, social media postings, shared documents, internet web forums, and internet chapters.
Oh, okay, I was looking at the third paragraph, I thought you were talking about electronic messaging between or among members?
It's kind of, it's, they're both about us communicating electronically.
Okay. So, just so I understand this, it says, school committee members should not use electronic messaging between or among members, except for housekeeping purposes. So are they, is this in reference to say when we get like a blast text from the chair, sent to all the members? Because the way I read that is, is like, if I want to speak to one of my fellow committee members and I was using like text messaging, am I reading this right? That would be prohibited? I want to discuss a school committee matter with Ms. Cohen about something?
It just says, shall exercise caution. Sounds discretionary.
I'm sorry, we just see that in my.
In the first line.
It's very vague.
But it also says in the third paragraph that it should be for housekeeping purposes. Right?
Right, so what if I'm texting Amy Vessels about something? Is that a problem?
I mean, the third paragraph indicates it should be just for house, that's the way I read that. That's why they clarified there, is that it's for housekeeping purposes.
And I wonder if we were to say electronic messaging using school accounts? Like, is that? Or are we not, never allowed to talk to one another ever?
That's the problem I have with this. That's kind of what that implies, and that's troubling.
I thought that this was more related to, if there was a, the quorum.
Yeah, that's my question.
So I, I, I just, I wonder if we need to put this one on hold so we can all kind of read this in more detail? Because. I don't, my training was that there's not an issue if there's a text message from me to you about something that's not a housekeeping purpose.
Because there's no quorum.
Because there's no quorum.
I mean, the risk is, is serial communication, but that's, you know, until that risk is realized, it shouldn't be prohibited.
Right.
Cause I think the rule. So, would we all be in, so perhaps I might recommend that Amy amend her motion to remove BHE.
Sorry, guys.
And we'll all put table this one. You can do it simply by just saying, I'm willing to amend my, amend the motion to remove.
Okay, I, I would like to amend my motion to remove policy BHE from the motion on the table.
And I seconded the motion, and I am accepting of that amended, amended motion. Any further discussion? No, because it was a friendly amendment, and so therefore, you don't normally vote on the amendment. But thank you for getting her back there.
Just checking.
All those in favor? Are this about motion as amended?
That was still very.
Very good, guys. So, policy subcommittee, keep being awesome, and we're gonna throw back to you, EFC, GBEE, and now BHE.
EFC, GBEE, and E.
So.
We're just doing.
EFD, EFD.
Make a song about E.
Why is E?
I'm sorry, EBE.
EFD.
And BHE.
Got all that, Alita?
BFG. I got it all. I'll send the rest over to MASC in the morning.
A-okay.
Bye, buddy, Anne Maria. All right, guys, next on the agenda here, cruising right along, we have subcommittee reports, and I'm gonna go to Budget and War first.
Budget and War is right last night. Relatively short meeting. We discussed the monthly operations report for the month of March, and we also started to put together a preliminary parking lot document to pass along to the next iteration of the subcommittee for next year.
We did have an administrative item that we talked.
I'm gonna talk to them.
All right. Thanks, guys. Um, over to communication. Communication will be tomorrow afternoon again. Still working on those. So, that is more Yoma's work, so we really appreciate it, and it will serve everyone. So do not belittle the effort, it's important. So thanks, guys. Um, over to the school building committee.
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Chairman, I do have a bit of a lengthy report by virtue of the fact that Superintendent and myself, along with representatives of Kesselblues Associates, Scanse USA, were in attendance today for a status conference with the Massio School Building Authority, and we give a rather extensive presentation. I'd just like to highlight what transpired today this afternoon, this morning, excuse me. For anybody scoring this at home, just similar to where you are in this project, we are about a third of the way through module six. What we presented today to the MSBA, when I say we, predominantly Mr. Olson and Ms. Williams, we updated them on the geothermal bid award and segmented to the current site enabling bid packages that are going out at this time. For those of you who are not familiar with the terms of site enabling, myself being included, that just pertains to the preliminary work at the, to setting up parking and traffic routes and whatnot. Spoke about what they call the furniture pilot program, just so everybody knows what that is, we're gonna be soliciting some samples from furniture vendors and suppliers for some test driving, the kids and the faculty will get a chance to test drive what it is that these providers will provide, and then decisions will be made further on down the line relative to furniture. Quite an update on the level of student involvement in these decisions, apparently that is important to the MSBA. The site plan update, we represented there was no significant changes relative to the site plan, with the exception of the geothermal wells, which are now going on the west side of property, right by the proposed tennis courts. Floor plans, again, updated them on some design changes, will promote layout of the school relative to the fitness rooms, so-called, the EMT program, bridge connections, and special education services. Ms. Williams laid out, the, we brought it down into our geothermal and site enabling bids, we'll also be sending out early bids on the foundation steel work that needs to be done. We were reminded of the need to assure that any design adjustments that we are making are finalized in advance of the MSBA's submission of our design package to DSC. So DSC is gonna have some oversight over our design as well. I assume that this will be more perfunctory than anything else, they have a very short window of turnaround on that, so I don't expect there to be much pushback from DSC. Some upcoming important dates, the MSBA reminded us that August 21st, 2024, we need to present our construction design at a 60% level. November 20th, 2024 will be our 90% construction design submission, and they're looking at October 2025 for the GMP, which is the gross maximum price for the construction, under our construction at risk processes. We have two further dates of great importance, April 25th is our next meeting, and can I say it, Kirk? I don't know if I want to steal any lace thunder, can I say it? All right, June 7th, we will be celebrating the 80th anniversary of Operation Overlord along with the all-important groundbreaking at the high school for the building. Superintendent Downing, I think it said this is not a public event as such, but there may be some.
We have to analyze the parking situation, and once we get back from our invited guests, we'll know.
Okay, thank you. That's it, thank you.
Excellent, thanks, Joe. Can I just ask you a quick question? Because I was at the last school building committee. With the geothermal wells being moved over to the proposed tennis courts, is there any negative impact on the use of that space?
No, I haven't, I'm aware of.
I think that question was asked.
Okay.
The tennis courts will go back on that space.
Yeah.
Yep.
At the conclusion of the project. That's why we built the three courts up front, so that we have tennis courts.
And that, you know, one of the other compelling reasons for doing that was it's gonna be a shorter run from the well area to the building, so.
Cheggings, okay. And schedule approval? Excellent, all right, thanks so much, guys. Personnel?
Personnel met on Monday, put together the schedule for the, um, training for the summit of evaluation, and then the process for the summit of evaluation, with some dates for that coming up in May.
So we'll, we'll do another training for everybody, a short training at a future meeting, so that you guys all understand what's expected of you for the summit of evaluation. Policy, anything more, Amy?
We're meeting on the 22nd. We're gonna look at a new parent communication policy and talk about it, so that, I think you're shooting for a date in May.
Parent communication, electronic grading, and, um, website classroom platforms.
And then we'll talk about this stuff as well, that we need to.
Excellent, thanks, Amy. Audit advisory, Dana's not here, I do know that the audit was sent to all of you, um, the annual audit was sent to all of you, and so I'm sure that she'll be taking that up at the next meeting. Dear Jay, um, Jackie's not here either, so we will wait for her USC update, and anything new for feedback?
Uh, no new updates since last time, hoping to return the meeting in May, they hold one, and I know they will also be presenting fiscal committee, I believe, they're scheduled?
They are on the planning calendar, so if you could just ask them.
I can pre-charge them and just try to confirm.
If you want to do that. Any op-?
We did have a nice collection of folks for Dr. Rimston's presentation last week.
Oh, that's great.
That's good. Yep.
That was a virtual presentation?
That was a virtual presentation, so.
Um, the OPAB management advisory committee lives only on paper, Scott, so hopefully we can remove that for now.
Is it?
It is, yeah. It snuck back on there, just, it's the subcommittee that doesn't want to go. So items for next agenda, all the student planning calendars there for you guys, anything pressing that you would like to voice here?
I do have one thing.
Please?
And it was so minor when I brought it up, it probably got pushed away and nobody remembered. Could I request that at one of our meetings in May, cause I may have a conflict on the 24th, um, that we take maybe 90 seconds or two minutes of the committee's time to come up with an absolute definition of what constitutes a majority on this committee? Cause we went through this back in October. I don't think it's, whatever we say it is, but just to clarify between the policy and what have you. So I, I would dedicate, suggest dedicating two minutes to that.
We, we can absolutely do that, I think it's still in the parking lot. I wonder, Joe, maybe you and I could communicate about how that could best be structured?
Sure, that will even take less than two minutes, then.
I'm gonna put it on the planning calendar and move it over. I'm feeling, uh, maybe May 2nd is the better day for that, if that's okay? Okay, anything else? All right, as always, guys, reach out, um, to me, and I can put what you would like to do on the unplanned calendar. We only have, other than that, in the parking lot, we only have a couple of things hanging there, but they're all to be addressed soon, except for the quorum rules, so thanks, Joe, for bringing that back up. All right, we're good. I'm gonna move to a jar. Thanks, Sharon. All in favor? All right, good night, everybody. Thank you, guys.
Joe, can you say something?
Yes.
Thank you.